They were really, really good in right there when I called. I heard that. The show was at a review thing, they gave them five stars. I thought I got great job. I'm trying to get all social security. That was great. That was great. Well, I know that in my, in my, I'd be on that. I did. It's all okay. I'm not very good at things. I think it's gonna hold up. Give you that, that listen here. We need to replace them. Yeah, I'll give a play there. Place them. Boy, that's good.
Because I'm already tried it. You know. Like, I want to try this. I got a, I got a good case. But you can solve them. You can do it, John. My past. My little, it is reasonable. It's cool. No, I respect you. It's not cool. I want it to stay in full. It's so. Oh, my gosh. I said, you should stretch out. Yeah. So that's a long time.
It's not gonna rain again.
I do like the black and then it was just that. And then there's, I have to, I just, we say, I don't. I know. So, man.
Well, so there's, I think it's, uh, year after, so she's a program. So I think it was funny, we're the top of the dam, it's still walking. I don't show up.
You didn't see it up there.
Yeah. So, yeah. We're just, I think.
We're saying more over the top of the dam. I think people are getting really kicked out.
Would you like your life? Probably not. Probably not. Radiating in that, or do you think, or something like that? I heard it was actually down the second floor. Well, then, people, my, uh, just like, the guy said, sounds, but they, they, like it did last time. So now I'm on it. I see all my pictures out.
I'll probably go back from that.
Yeah. One. But it's getting into the one.
Well, you would like to shake one, just like any of the piece of equipment. Or, or.
Question.
A little better.
That's right.
I say you did, but then.
Yeah. I mean, so that's your, on the ground.
No.
I hear that. They, 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 they have been around.
Actually, people will be upset if that thing, too.
They will.
Okay. Right. Same. It's chill. It's, I think, people are gonna be, well, I mean, their games are set, but we're gonna call the changer. Which is, you know, call the changer, policy on their games. Or looking at the two.
So it'll be more of a policy change. You know, they're around the day, it's trash. For, 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 for. All, all. Just to be more, just to be a little bit.
Good evening, I have seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting order. The first item of business is, uh, tree board discussion. So Rebecca Armstrong is here to give us a short presentation, and followed by her will be, Paula Downs, uh, will give a short presentation. And ask that we hold questions and comments until both presentations are done, and then we'll have a discussion, okay? So let's do it that way, alright? So, Ms. Rebecca, uh, Ms. Armstrong.
Just gonna read comments.
Is that mic on?
Pardon?
Make sure your mic, microphone's on.
It's on. Sounds like it's good. Sounds good. Okay. The Bel Air Tree Board has been concerned about the lack of protection of trees and native spaces in recent developments. The city notifies only people affected within 200 feet of the development about their proposed changes. In reality, everyone is affected by the development, whether they are 100 feet from the development or on the opposite side of town. New developments affect every property owner, from the infrastructure demands to the future value of our properties. If a development should destroy the roads due to their use of heavy equipment, we, the citizens, pay the price for the building of new roads. If the development is not created using best practices, like connected roads and sidewalks, parks and green spaces, and mixed-use principles, the value of the development will not hold, and over time it will become an eyesore, decreasing the overall value of all properties in the city. We are asking the city to change their ordinance to include notification of all developments utilizing public communication systems like the Breeze, as well as the Water Bill, so that all citizens have the opportunity to review, consider, and respond to the developer's plans. We're all affected, so we all should have the opportunity to respond. The developer will have the added benefit of getting feedback from people that care about the quality of the plan, and make adjustments before it obligates him or her to future financial obligations. Financial institutions will appreciate the thoroughness of such developments that have been vetted, have been vetted, that have vetted the plan utilizing the community. This process makes us stronger and more responsive to the needs of the citizens, as well as resilient to changes in our community. We have seen and appreciate the improvements in access to information about city functions recently. It is still a challenge to find things, but the changes are noticed and appreciated. We have to spend time to find out about upcoming developments, and then must get the plans and determine when and to whom to express our concerns. Usually, we are seeing this information after the fact, and worse, after the building is already started. By this time, any input we have seems far too late. For these reasons, we would like to be notified with a link to the plans and proposals of any development, so we, the tree board, can look over the plans for tree coverage, check for, check the area for natural watershed systems and native spaces, and watch for the inclusion of open spaces and community connectivity. Our task is to ensure that we protect the tree canopy. By protecting the tree canopy, we can help keep our water clean and decrease the heat island effect. We, the tree board, are more effective if we are aware of the future development plans and can give input into the preservation of natural systems that will help us preserve and maintain clean water and air, as well as provide an effective tree canopy to lower city temperatures. We ask that you change the ordinance so we are notified of the development, provided access to the plans, given contact information, and time to respond with our concerns. This will give us a tool to do our job in protecting the tree canopy for a sustainable future. There is a lot of destruction of our watershed that causes the waters from rains to rush into our drainage system, causing flooding and damage. The area around drain pipes is often sprayed with Roundup, killing the plant material around the pipes. The soil loses the plant material that once held it and washes into the creek. You can see large areas of exposed soil that wash away into the ponds, lakes, and waterways. This increases flooding, causing these areas to fill up, and they'll need dredging to clean out, so they're, they, so that they can continue functioning to protect us, instead of flooding our streets and neighborhoods. In some of these spaces, bushes or other plant material can put in place, and in others, simply not weed eating or spraying would help. By notifying residents not to spray Roundup or other herbicides would help keep these areas more functional for longer periods of time. We have seen numerous times people spraying Roundup along waterways to kill the plant material. See this right along 45th Street a lot. The plant material they kill off first is usually sedges that look pretty nice, and what survives is raggy and invasive plants that can withstand Roundup. Leaving cordgrass and sedges, plains coreopsis and clovers in place increases the beauty and holds the soil. We, the city, pay landscaping firms to care for large areas of our community. They use granular fertilizers that cause our water systems to load up with nutrients. These water bodies with big nutrient loads frequently become toxic with blue-green algae blooms. By putting into the contract with all lawn care companies that they cannot use fertilizers and must leave the grass clippings, we can save money on fertilizers and make our water safer by decreasing the nuclear nutrient load. This same requirement can and should be made for all lawn care companies in our community. We're all paying the cost indirectly of cleaning the toxins that are created from the blue-green algae blooms. We can be the leaders in this metropolitan area of creating the safest community, not just in crime, but in our lakes, ponds, creeks, and natural systems.
Alright, well, thank you, uh, Ms. Downs. You have some information for us?
I just wanted to provide some context, as requested, related to what our current landscaping code does say, because I know that, um, the previous speaker talked about, um, concerns about development. So I wanted just to clarify and bring to your attention again about what the code actually says. Pick up the right one, maybe. So, just a brief summary for the sections. It's kind of a robust, um, chapter 18, article 10, which is the landscaping and screening. Um, and as you can see, the intent is to make sure that any development is aesthetically pleasing, right? Buildings, projects, and developments, and to protect and preserve the appearance, character, health, safety, and welfare of the community. And they're intended to increase the compatibility of adjacent uses. So as we start building homes and industry and other kinds of businesses, that they're all compatible with how they're being used. The other, um, section just lists some general requirements, talking about land areas being required to be brought up to finished grade and planted in sod, native grasses, or other appropriate ground covers, um, and making sure that we, um, are requiring them to, uh, plant the minimum number of trees and appropriate number of shrubs, ground cover that sod or seeds are, uh, taking place. They are required in all developments to submit to us a landscaping plan, which is evaluated for many codes, not just landscaping. We evaluate parking, we have setbacks, everything related to the building site. And so the landscaping plan has, as you can see, a list of requirements, um, with a whole bunch of details besides this. This is a summary, but these are the requirements, um, if they are submitting, when they are submitting a landscaping plan, what we look at, and how we review it, um, and provide comments back, uh, related to the site. So it includes things like grading, location, uh, size, spread of landscape materials, the mature sizes of plant materials, location of watering sources, all those elements are included in the site plan, uh, landscaping portion that we review. In addition, we have a very robust list, um, that was entered into the code that gives, um, anybody planting landscaping the preferred landscaping trees and shrubs and grasses in public areas. Um, and that code is derived from the Preferred Tree Species for South Central Kansas publication. Uh, we also, uh, define and talk about street trees, which provides details for the street trees in residential and non-residential districts along all collector and local streets. And the code sets the number, the types of trees, where they're to be planted, the distance of planting, and includes also some tree tips and the prohibited trees, what is not allowed to be planted. Um, there are a couple of sections that handle prelim, permit, boy, I'm having a little, little talk. Perimeter landscaping, uh, what is required in non-residential and residential perimeter landscaping, which again includes the number of trees, placement of landscaping, and the distance between the plants, plantings. Uh, we have design criteria and planting. Um, it specifically sets out the minimum planting requirements for trees, shrubs, plant materials, ground covers, seeding and sodding, including the types of the planting, the caliper or the size of the trunk of the planting, the spacing, how much has to be planted on the lot, uh, what happens around detention, retention basins and ponds, and then how we use indigenous and drought-resistant plant material, and it's encouraged. Um, then, the next sections, couple of sections, talk about how the interior of the lot, this is, uh, in our, uh, M1 areas, what that needs to look like on the interior lot, usually parking lot islands and around the buildings or structures, including types, distance, um, all those kinds of things. Um, and then there's a timeframe for completing landscaping. We require to have that at certificate of occupancy unless the certificate of occupancy can be issued in December, and we can't plant in December, and then we put a temporary or conditional, uh, certificate of occupancy pending the landscaping that we go back out and inspect and make sure is there. Um, the code also talks about the selection, installation, and maintenance of the landscaping, which is just, as it says, uh, selecting, installing, and maintaining that, um, uh, the, the, um, ground coverings, the trees, everything, and then screening requirements, and that's critical if you have outdoor storage, if you have trash areas, if you have rooftop units. All those kinds of things have to be screened. Some of that screening occurs with landscaping, obviously, elements. Um, and then the last portion of the code, um, is the tree preservation section, which is, um, sets out ways which projects can be designed to preserve existing trees and vegetation to the greatest extent possible. Um, most of that is dependent on the lot size, what's being built on the lot, which may need to shift. But then, of course, if they are having to remove an existing tree or ground cover or natural grass, then, of course, the landscaping requirements go back and require them to put back trees, plants, ground covering, those kinds of things in the critical areas on the lot. So, um, there's language in there about the city requiring, can require a tree survey, which means survey your lot, tell us what is on it and how you will disrupt it unless there's nothing in there on that lot particularly. It talks about location of improvements, um, and what they should be doing as much as they possibly can or with every reasonable effort to preserve existing plantings on the site. Um, it continues to talk about, um, the existing trees being protected from construction activities if they're going to remain, and that every effort should be made to relocate, um, around utility easements or make sure that utility easements are located away from the tree preservation areas. Um, there's a section in there about tree removal, requiring a permit and a plan. It comes through the planning, and it comes through the building permit when it's issued for the entire building construction. Um, and then the last is just the administrative exception. It's an opportunity for the city to be presented with, um, a, hmm, a request, I should say, to be exempt from or be, seek out relief from any of the zoning codes related to the landscaping. So this is one of many sections that get, um, reviewed every time we have a development that gets presented with planning. And so I just wanted to make you familiar that it existed, and then what kinds of elements are included in this landscaping, uh, code that we have on our, in our city code right now, so.
So this, this is just a summary of the code. This is not the code itself.
This is not every detail.
Code is available online, so, yeah. So I wanted to make sure that was clear, because, uh, this would be too generic for a code.
Very short, yes. No, it's much more detailed, it's got charts, it's got specific, much more specifics in the code that's posted online.
Okay, very good, thank you. I appreciate that information. I, so, I don't know, my, my perspective is, we all want to be good stewards of the earth, so we need to do what we can to help preserve things. But just one other clarification from, from Paula. Who is doing these reviews of these plans, and who's reporting this to who?
Um, I review all the plans, site plans, from a zoning perspective. So everything related to the zoning code that affects that lot, or that property, or that development, gets reviewed by city staff. In addition, the city engineer reviews the drainage plan, the topographical contours, all those kinds of things. And then Public Works oftentimes weighs in, especially if they're doing a water sewer tap, uh, for the building permit and some of the other things that we're doing. And then, um, a lot of those, um, yeah, that would be the extent from a city perspective.
And when that review is done, do you make a report to somebody? And who does that, who gets that report? Does the planning, the commission get that report, or is the city manager?
Yeah.
Where, who gets that?
So the only report that is developed at the end of a review of plans is if there are deficiencies. If they do not have something contained in the plan, if it's not clarified in the plan, then we send them a report back to the developer that says you're missing this item, you need to clarify this, and this is missing. So we have that to where, finally, when it's finally approved, that's, triggers the building permit being issued. And so until they have met all the requirements contained in the zoning code or subdivision regulations, they cannot pull a building permit. So until all those are met, then that moves it forward.
So, so this is requiring a building permit to be, application to be made, and then that's when you start that review, so.
I don't, they don't even get a permit. They have to submit all the plans prior.
Well, they submit the plans.
Yeah.
And then apply for a building permit, and then you, tell me how this works. What's the order, or who goes, who goes first?
Who goes what, who's on first?
Yeah.
Um, basically, we have a pre-application meeting for the development. So we get some initial information, they get some initial information back to us, they make sure that they are filing the proper type of case, whatever that may look like.
Hold on a second, because.
Yes.
I, I want to make sure we're not mixing things up.
Okay.
A development versus pulling a permit are not the same.
No.
Okay, so, at what point are you reviewing what? So that we, we, so that we're all on the same page?
That's okay.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're.
Typically, we are made aware of developments because they are either submitting a preliminary plat, they are submitting a final plat, they want to replat, they want to rezone, they do any of those kinds of activities. So we have a pre-application, they talk to us about the project, we provide guidance. But then they have to submit with their zoning case, whatever that may look like, plat, replat, whatever, their plans, their everything, right? For us to understand what's happening.
Is all of this reviewed at that time?
It's, it's, it will be reviewed before they can get a building permit. On commercial development, that process happens with MABCD. MABCD reviews all the building plans, Anne and I look at all the site, the landscaping, the drainage plans, the fire department looks at all those plans, we all make our comments. Once all of the plans are finalized, then they can pull a building permit. Once it's approved and it meets everybody's codes and requirements, then they can pull the building permit, but not until then.
But lots done before the building permit ever gets there.
Absolutely.
There's, site work is done, there's sewer lines and drainage all done, and, and, uh, water lines. They're all installed.
Correct, the streets, the infrastructure stuff.
Yeah, all that, infrastructure's installed.
That's correct.
Right. So if there is an issue with the trees.
Yes.
That would be the time that you would say, well, should these trees be removed or not? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, long before they start any actual physical construction on that site to develop it.
Right, yeah. Well, building of, of a house or apartment, whatever, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I just want to make sure we're clear on that, because I, I was a little confused, which you were talking about when? So, okay.
Yes.
Alright, alright, very good, thank you for the clarification. Alright, um, so, I don't want to dominate this discussion, I just had some questions, so. Please, uh, if anybody has any questions they would like to ask, it's your chance.
I, I went in and read the section 18 of the ordinances, whatever they are, the right word for it. And I, I was in the tree section, what were valid trees and what weren't. And I think we need to be updating that, because it still included pear trees, and we should not be allowing ornamental pear trees to be planted anymore. And it's mentioned mulberries, and in fine print it said not the ones that, but I think we ought to just delete mulberries, because there's the chance for confusion there, if somebody goes out and gets something. And, and so that's my input, I, I just think we need to review the tree list a little bit.
And as you may or may not be aware, there are several codes that will be reviewed and updated, and a lot of them reference publications that probably have been updated since the code was updated. So that point is very clear to us, that we know that if any time we are referencing another publication, we need to make sure that we are modifying the code as that publication is modified, or create our own list or table of trees that are acceptable, and then change it as we need to.
Problem, it didn't reference another publication.
Okay.
It included the table and.
Yeah, there's a table that came from another publication.
And I've seen that table before, and I planted a pear tree in my yard, and I recredited it.
Yeah.
You took it out.
It kind of took itself out, and that's part of the problem with.
I had a question on the, on the grass clippings. So, I'm, this is, I'm not an expert gardener or even a beginning gardener, but how, how easy would it be to just leave the grass clippings? I know there's, it's gonna help retain the water, it's gonna, gonna decompose, but is it something that just, is it just an aesthetic issue, or why would we not do that?
Right, right now, we, we throw the grass clippings on the ground, uh, at least at City Hall and everywhere else. Um, they don't bag, uh, grass clippings when we cut City Hall. The one element we can discuss is the use of fertilizer. Um, we've been kind of under the same work contract for years, and if, if we want to, I can reach out, and, and I don't know, Rebecca, if there's, uh, organic fertilizer or anything of such nature, um.
Rebecca, if you turn the microphone, because this can't, if you don't speak in the microphone, it can't be heard.
Okay.
Okay.
I know, because in our park in Willow Creek, they throw the granulated fertilizer down, and they don't really need to do that.
And that's why I said, we've been doing the same thing for years and years, and, and you brought it up, so I mean, that's a good point of discussion for us, is if you want me to continue that or not, that's an easy line to cut, if that's something you guys would lit wish, uh, to stop doing. But as far as, uh, bagging grass clippings, we don't do any of the black bagged grass clippings in our, on our properties that, that I know of.
Yeah, and I, I thought they did, but I'll have to, okay, they don't, you know they don't for sure, okay? I know they throw the granulated fertilizer for sure, because.
The liquid fertilizer instead of granular?
No, well, it, it, I think it has the same runoff problem, and, and so it's better. Yeah.
I under, I understand why granular's a problem.
Yeah. And.
Some of the liquid fertilizers are anhydrous pneumonia, but not all of them, um, and.
This is not liquid, unless you're filling it in down into the dirt.
Okay, uh, but I do believe there are some natural fertilizers out there on the market, and that might be something worth looking at, to see if that makes sense to do.
The best thing we can do is put the grass clippings back, and I had to fight for a few years with my lawn company to get them to do that.
Yeah.
And now their lawn companies are starting to say, you know, we don't have to bag it, we don't have to haul it off, this is a great idea, why didn't we do this earlier? So that's something we really should be promoting, and you can't tell it on my yard that I don't have it bagged.
It's actually, it saves water, too, because those grass clippings go into the ground and keep the water from evaporating.
Put on there, goes right back down.
Yeah.
You don't have to put more fertilizer on, so.
So.
Yeah, I haven't bagged in years.
I haven't either.
I, I don't, is it okay for me to ask questions?
Certainly, that's why we.
I was gonna ask about how many trees have been identified to save in the developments? How I'm seeing the developments is after they're being built, and I'm not seeing these spaces saved.
So, and that's, that's kind of where we had a, we had a change in, you know, my new job, Paula's brand new here, too. So there's a lot of history that you have, Rebecca, that, I mean, we're, we're moving forward with, and I can certainly research all, any questions you have and get back to you on that. But off the top of our head, we, I mean, with Keith and Ty retiring, we lost 37, 38 years of, you know, of knowledge. So we're not gonna have a lot of these answers off the top of our head, and I'll be glad to research and try to find those answers for you, um, the best we can.
Hear about them, about these developments, so we can walk through them and see what's there. When you look at the platted areas, you, you look at the maps on the plat on the website, some of these, like so many, that, that one on Webb and 53rd, there is so many properties going in there, it's a little surprising. And then, when I saw the plat over here, this, it's a wetlands over here by Rock Ridge Healthcare. That's all a wetlands, and when you walk through that area, it's clearly a wetlands, and yet it's platted for buildings, for, for properties. So it's these kinds of things that we think we can help figure out how we could, uh, give. So it's these kinds of things that we think we can help figure out how we could, uh, give input.
Are, are those plans, Paul, posted to the planning commission agenda? So that people could follow the planning commission and read those?
Anything that appears before the planning commission is posted a week before the meeting. And then of course, those same, uh, agenda items come before the council, probably two, three, maybe four weeks later. So they, it's twice available if it's coming before planning commission, which would only be a development type case. So yeah, you, they see it twice. It's posted twice either between the planning commission.
That's what I think we're really talking about here is developments like Forty-Eagle Developments or something, not individual lots being built on.
Correct.
The issue.
Maria, I was going to ask a question about the notification process. So I know just, just last year, we, uh, made the decision to make our official, uh, newspaper our website. But there are some legal requirements that are zoning related that require to be distributed via newsprint. If, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just trying to restate what our current notification process is so that not just Rebecca, but anybody in the public can understand how that looks and how they can be notified when there are zoning changes that post.
Right now, we are complying with statute. Basically, if there's going to be a specific area of land that is going to be changed through some type of a zoning process, statute requires us to notify those individuals that live within two hundred feet. And that is done through sort of, uh, mailings through staff. And they keep copies of those mailings. Also, it goes into our website, which is the official newspaper ever since our resolution of last year. The other notification that has been done is, I believe, when it's notified, when it's put in the paper, there's also a brief statement describing what is going to happen. And, uh, I can't think of any other notifications that an individual could sign up for notifications through the city. I know that I've signed up, especially as council, so I can get emails, uh, told me about when there's going to be a planning commission meeting.
On, on the list of people that we notify that are, of the two to three hundred feet thing, could we add the tree board to that list just so they'd always get it? And if they get too much information, they can just delete it.
Uh, statute does not prohibit that. Uh, there's nothing saying you could not do that.
Well, let's be clear what that notification is. Because I think that all that notification is, is that there's a plan to be, to change something and got to come to the planning commission meeting to find out what it is.
Well, they'd at least know to look on the agenda and see the documents.
Right, they would know that, right.
I mean, the alert, you, anybody can register for those alerts right now. You just go on our website and you could put in an email to the tree board if they have an email or anybody, any citizen, any, you know, any group could put an email in there and get that same alert. I just wanted to restate, the current process we're following is state statute. It's not an ordinance by the city. We're following state mandate, state statute requirements. Not saying we couldn't do something different or above that, but that's what we're currently following.
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking about. It's going above that.
Yeah, I just wanted to set the stage for why it is the way it is now.
So I get some alerts. I can ask specifically for an alert every time the planning commission is meeting or every time they're looking at a development?
I think any notice of a meeting is posted.
I don't think that notice goes out, but it is posted on the website.
Posted that there's a meeting.
Always a certain time the planning commission meets. So you can always pull that agenda down, uh, when you know that that planning commission meets. I think it's the second Tuesday of every month. Is that correct?
Yeah, so.
As, as, as elected bodies, we shouldn't do that.
It's the second Thursday of every month.
Okay, second Thursday.
And they only meet once a month. The packet is usually posted the Thursday or Friday before every meeting. Whatever's heard at planning commission then is placed on the three week to four week later, city council meeting, same agenda packet, new staff report. So it comes twice, um, and it, and all the agendas and all the meeting minutes are posted online also.
So the reason I say that is because that is a scheduled meeting that's automatically noticed to everybody. Now, governing body people shouldn't really be at those planning commission meetings because we review all that stuff later and we should be using objective review and not have a, a biased review because we went to that meeting. So I avoid those for that very reason, uh, because that's not a good place for us to be.
And, and the notification, just for clarification and a little bit of background information, the notification of property owners with the two hundred feet have to be produced by the applicant via a, like, security title does all the research on all the owners. When we get that list, then we do a certified mailing to all of those property owners, letting them know about the case and when the case will be heard so that they can appear. And so, um, that's the other way in which the notification occurs.
I was just saying that's at the stage. What we're talking about is changing a city process or city policy of how we're having engagement in the process, which would be above and beyond, which I'm not saying is a bad thing. I'm just saying that's sort of what we're talking about. Changes. One other thing I had was, Rebecca, thank you for being here, first off. Um, I appreciate your comments. I always appreciate visiting with you. I think you gave a great, unique perspective and it's very valuable. I actually replied to your letter, um, in an email. And I think that's been shared with most folks. I mean, I personally had a situation just a few weeks ago where I reached out to Ted and said, hey, there's something going on in this pond over at Alley Park. It's completely covered with, with moss, algae, whatever else is in there, right? And you can't even see the water. And, you know, it's a, one, one, it's not great, right, for the aquatics. But also it's just kind of sad thinking about summer campers wanting to go fish in that pond and it's almost unfishable. You, like, the Alley Park pond. So anyway, I reached out to Ted and just said, hey, you know, part, part of this is there's, to me, there's multiple stakeholders when you start talking about any of those things, right? There's a developer, an HOA, there's city, which includes public works and our vendors that are we hire. There's institutions like schools, churches, and commercial, you know, buildings and users. And then there's citizens, right? And then lastly, the environment, right? That's a stakeholder in all those. So I guess why I say that is any one of these changes may have very minimal cost impact, right? One of these changes of just a way we mow or a way we edge, or like you say, just don't fertilize, could save money. Some of them may cost a little bit more, but not drastically more. It's just more of a like education process and more of a, hey, let's just tell public works to not edge that way or to not mow that way. So there's a lot of nuts and bolts things here. And I don't think anybody is up for the task here tonight to figure, I'm just kind of speaking from the heart here. I think there, we can improve what we do, but to me, it does feel like it's a partnership and it's an education process with staff and public works. And I mean, part of it, like, you know, there's a school property. That's not our property. But, you know, they're probably edging or mowing a certain way and that might be some of the, some of the culvert pipes that you've mentioned. Because I, I'm visualizing those right now. But I think, I think everybody wants our community to be better, right, to improve. And this is definitely an area, it feels like there are some things we can improve. And some of them are probably really low hanging fruit and we can do them immediately. And other, the other of them, it's a great time because our comp plan, we're changing, we're updating zoning and codes. And it's a good time to say, what's our code say? What's our tree code say? And, you know, I, I noticed some of the things in the tree code too that could use some updating. So really appreciate you being here and I think that it's a great time. I'm glad you came. Um, and hopefully we can work with staff to kind of work through the codes and make the updates that seem, uh, appropriate. It's all balance, right? When we make decisions as a growing community, we're not going to be able to preserve every tree. We're just not, all right? That's not possible. But I do know what's possible is conversations like Iron Gate. I remember a couple of years ago, the developer came and there was some, um, there were some folks that expressed some, some frustration with the pond that's at Iron Gate and the development that'd be north. And I'm not naming names. There was just people that said, hey, we'd like to see that tree row preserved. There's a hedged tree row there. Um, and I think at that time, again, there was discussion of, yeah, we don't need to move that. I mean, our, how, our homes are going to go to a certain, that could stay. So those are the kinds of things that we can work through and set a tone with our new, our new comp plan of how we approach those developments, how we do save trees where we actually can instead of just mowing the whole thing down. But, um, it's a balance. So just please understand as we're making decisions, that piece is only one part of ten other things that we're having a balance thinking about. So, but again, appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, overall, I'll tell you Marty McGee came in.
My phone.
Marty McGee, he's just wonderful. We talked, we've talked and he says, hey, where you see a place where bushes could go, let me know. And so the tree board is feeling this. It's, we, we want to expand. We've come to you to ask you to allow us to have more people. We need to expand. It's, it's, if we have to spend the time looking up when there's going to be a development, a change, a big change, then we, we get some kind of sidetracked. That's extra work we have to do. Okay? So that's kind of why I'm asking to be notified. When I look at what's happened, Lysy, there's no trees down Lysy. I don't know how that happened because the ordinance was in place at that time. So we don't necessarily know how stuff happens. But I think if we can have more input, I think we can be helpful. So the pear Bradford pear tree is one that became, oh God, don't plant that tree. Chinese pistachio is going to be the same one, okay? It's going to come along. Don't plant that tree. Yet we're all planting it. Okay? So that's the kinds of stuff we can watch for. What we're wanting to see in our vision is that this could be one of the greatest natural areas to come to. We have two pipelines going through Bel Air. We have a high power line going through Bel Air. Those can have, uh, natural areas. Natural areas are a lot easier to take care of. Once you get the native plantings in there, it takes a bit because you have to figure out how to do it. It, it gets a little complicated sometimes. But once you do that, then you have these beautiful places to walk. And I think people are learning, we're out planting along Eagle Lake. People just stepped up and started helping us. It was really great. And every conversation we have, they're excited. They're, they're excited to be seeing this happen. And so hopefully we'll figure it out, how to do it.
I've been over to Eagle Lake recently. How are those plantings doing?
I have, I, I have to replace some of the bushes, the geese. I, I saw the geese do it. So I could, could have called the police. I saw geese pulling these bushes out, you know, so, so, but I'm going to go back in. I have more bushes because of the late rain we've had. I'll go in, drop some bushes off, but back in and then, um, I'll go, I'll keep going back and, you know. The worst, um, so Kansas Forestry has these bushes available. They're, they're bear root bushes. And they sell them thirty dollars, twenty-five bear root bushes or native bushes. So it's very inexpensive, but the, it's not the best time. April is not the best time to get them. So what I'm doing, I have about fifty and I'm burming them in. So whatever I have left, we'll go back in there and wherever Marty, I've been sending pictures to Marty of places I can, that could use some bushes. And in the fall, we'll use it as a project. In fact, Central Park, we've got some ideas we'll submit to Marty and see if that would be good. Instead of just planting one tree in Central Park, we want to kind of do a planting. Because the one tree, uh, trees need friends. So they need friends. So we've planted four trees in there and the four trees have died. So we started shifting. And so if we plant like three to five trees, probably three trees and then bushes in there, it will be more of a place. And then Central Park isn't used very often because it's, it's hot. It's up on the top of the hill. And so it's hot, but there's a lot of other projects we can do. And people really enjoy the projects. It's, I, I just am amazed how many people, there was when that Eagle Lake, people were coming for days before helping us. There's a guy went over there and started watering stuff for us. So it, it's fun.
So one of the things I found with the plants, when I plant, uh, like tomato plants, I had to put chicken wire around them to keep the, the animals from rabbits and whatever else from getting to them. Maybe you need to do that. Keep the geese away. I don't know.
I think we'll just win the battle with the geese because, but geese, actually, they, the, when you plant along the river, you put in bushes along the river, geese stop going to those areas. So once the, the bush is starting, it's established, the geese won't be as, uh, won't frequent that area as much. But, um, it, it, there's a real interesting, and I hate to keep talking, but real quickly, on Forty-Ninth Street and, um, there's a little pond in there. And when you look at that little pond, you think, oh my gosh, that's a, that's a mess because it's covered. It's covered with duckweed and duckweed is a good plant in a pond. It's a very healthy, ecologically healthy, uh, pond. It's, it's a surprise. It's got a green like ferny grass that's in it. I scooped out buckets of that and I put it in Eagle Lake. Why I did that was Eagle Lake is what had the blue green algae bloom. How you tell blue green algae is you'll take a stick and sweep it through the water and you pull your stick up and nothing stays on the stick. That's blue green algae. That's what's creating the toxin. So when you, some of our ponds, that pond in particular is really healthy. I'm trying to get some water people to come and do a tour with me and doing a walking tour and let's talk and look at that pond because it is a gem. When we're doing retention ponds, we kind of have not a place we can put plant material. So that's a whole other thing. But I think if we could have some input into some of the developments, we could come up with some ideas that might be helpful. And that's sort of what we want to do. We want to be on that side of it. I pulled cord grass, uh, so right over here in the street, the, the dirt flowed and it's growing cord grass. Cord grass is a swamp grass. It's a really pretty grass. I pulled it up. I put it over at Eagle Lake with the same goal is try to use up that fertilizer. It may or may not take. The cattails we put in there took. Those will use up that fertilizer that's in that lake. And it, it brings more fish. Um, it's a habitat.
Paul, I was actually going to ask that about our retention ponds and whether or not there is some adjustments that staff can look into of just the design of our retention ponds. And that is another good option because every development requires it because of K D H E and the, uh, storm water management of each, each, uh, of so many acres requires a pond. It's like one acre now, I think. Um, so all those areas are areas where we could stand to benefit. If we were just to update a few little things, the details, uh, that we do it, how we do it, instead of just a netting and a, and a grass on the edge, maybe there's a better option for stabilizing those. I know Willow Steaks are used a lot on Army Corps projects to, uh, immediately establish and, and protect the banks. So there's maybe an option. There's, there's options out there and I do think that's something we could stand to look at. And we would just update our, our development ordinance or our development codes and our development agreements would, would follow suit. So again, if there's ideas that can be shared with staff that we can do some research on, I think this is a really good time to do it. And in person, just a personal note, wildflowers is also another great thing for pollinators. I'm a gardener and I bit off more than I could chew a couple of years ago. I had six, uh, raised beds. And I decided to plant half those in pollinators, just wild, wildflowers. And I love them. Best decision I ever made and it's a great plant. It's really easy to maintain. Just needs a little bit of water and then poof, and then they don't need any irrigation at all. So those are just other examples of things that we could consider, but thank you again for being here.
So a couple of things to just, just think about. And Maria knows this, but I do not like ordinances that refer to documents out there like the American Standard of Nursery Stock because that's just makes the ordinance really convoluted. I would actually prefer, and if tree board would be up to this. I know that you have a list of preferred trees. So, and we, and I, we've discussed having a list of preferred grasses. And maybe we could have a, a list of preferred fertilizers that are natural fertilizers instead of just anything. And if you could create those lists, they could become city documents that, that could be. referenced in the code. And then you can update the documents as they need to be updated when you learn new information. I don't like changing codes just because we learned another tree, we can add to the list or something. Or we've learned something about a tree that, oh, this is really not a good idea. We need to get that one off the list. Okay, I'd rather us just have those kind of lists and then we can maintain those lists with revision control and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, those are just some things to think about if 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 the Treeboard would be up to taking on those tasks. The other thing I think would be great because you guys in the Treeboard are really the experts about this. I'm not the expert at this at all. I don't know if anybody here on council is, maybe there are some people that have some expertise in this. But maybe schedule meetings with the HOAs and talk with them about some of these ideas. When you have them developed, I mean, don't do it now because because they're not fully developed. I mean, you've got ideas in your head, but you haven't put them down on paper and we haven't sanctioned them. Okay, so I think that maybe if you come up with with those those lists of suggestions and then the city can sanction those suggestions, we can put them as a reference in the code. And then that's the time to go have that communication with the HOAs about, hey, we really would like you to your help. We really would like you to remove the requirement from fescue from your HOA documents. Okay, but you can't just tell them that you gotta give them some options. You gotta say, here's some here's some alternatives that we think you would. Not gonna happen overnight. I mean, even if you started overseeding this fall, it's gonna take two or three years to change a lawn over to a new grass. Okay, so those kind of just some thoughts there that I think might be a good thing, good way to go. I think city staff knows we need to update these codes. They they they're identifying all kinds of codes or got problems or they're not problems. They're just they just need to be updated. This need to be refreshed and and brought up to date. And so as we look through this, maybe that's something we could have some discussion between between Treeboard and staff to say, how's this work? Okay. So.
I just wanted to jump in with a few quick points. I know we could be here till midnight talking about it. But number one, I thought our discussion at the end of last week was really good. I think people are open to it, the drought and pollinators and more understanding about those issues. People are open to like wildflowers and our discussion about Skyview Park last week. We we brought that up. I wouldn't probably support changing any of our notification since that's kind of meeting statute standards. But one thing I really appreciated was back in February when Paula gave her presentation at the Planning Commission meeting that goes over the process. Sometimes and it's they're not all cookie cutters, like just kind of understanding the process. If if Nick and her ever had a chance, I know the cop plan's going on, like maybe not tomorrow. But at some point, making a a resonant friendly digestible video or walkthrough, like here is the process and here is where you can find this information, you know, on online. I think that would be maybe education more than changing our notification process. In April, I know you talked about bowling alone and why aren't people more engaged? And volumes have been written on that. Why are people less engaged? One thing that I don't think got enough attention is Nick, again, when he came on board, implemented the timestamps for agenda issues on the videos through like the agenda page. So people can more easily jump in and not say, you know, item B, I want to hear. But did they talk for five minutes about item A or an hour? So I think it's a really valuable resource that maybe we need to point out as well as if there's a certain issue you're interested in, it's more easy to find that discussion and and get in contact. My last question for Ted was, do we still have an arborist on staff here?
Yep, Shannon is down Public Works.
And where does he come in in this? He's just kind of here to.
He's certified arborist. He's he works with Public Works. But he's available for any consultations or.
But I mean, not just in terms of with the city, is he the guy to go to with any tree questions?
Yeah, Marty Marty utilizes his knowledge as much as he needs to.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other comments or concerns on this Treeboard issue? To give us some direction we can go?
The HOA, one of the HOA people came to one of our events and she talked to the Eagle Lake event and talked and I told her we would come talk with them and she hears and she was here in Central Park. So we will reach out when we see because there's things we could do.
Yeah.
Better or different.
So how many HOAs do we have?
Yeah. You don't know. Of all time. How many active ones? Yeah. Six, six to 10 is kind of the big active ones. And then we probably need to do some work on some of the inactive ones, but.
Yeah, I don't think you need to reactivate them, but but if they're not doing anything, they're not enforcing their their own HOA bylaws. So, okay. All right, well, if that concludes everything, if everybody's happy with that direction, then that will then we'll move on to the next item. So thank you very much, Rebecca, and thank you, Paula, and for everybody's discussion on this. The next thing is the budget and Barry is here to wow us with his wisdom on the budget.
We'll see. Not much wisdom, but we'll get through it. And so we're kind of kicking off our budget season here. We'll go through several workshops, starting off kind of like with this one. A certain brief overview, kind of some fund accounting fundamentals. Go over the new software and how we're implementing that when it comes to budgeting and reporting and everything. And we'll kind of just do a brief history of our mill levy over time and kind of see what get some feedback from council in the direction we want to go with that as we develop the budget over the next couple of weeks. So governmental accounting, it's it is a little different than other types of accounting. We have to have everything split out into funds. Each of those funds has its own respective revenues, its own respective expenses. And there's limitations and regulations on what that money for that fund can be spent for. All those are kind of dictated by statute. They're sprinkled throughout, whether it's bond and interest for debt service can only be used for principal and interest payments. General fund, it is the most wide open fund. It can be used to pay any expense of the city or any liability. We have enterprise funds, which are business type funds like water and sewer, special revenue funds like our streets fund and then our capital improvement funds, which are just that capital improvements. Any major purchases we have or any big projects that the city's doing, we'll do out of those funds. There are also budgeted and unbudgeted. Our budgeted funds, we have to have revenues and expense statement in the state form that is certified every single year. The unbudgeted funds like equipment reserve and our capital improvement reserve, we just plan those out throughout the year. We'll put projects in, take projects out and then council authorizes those expenses when they come out of there. So as we prepare the budget for this year, we you probably hear us talk a lot about Ted and I talk a lot about expenditure authority. So that's what we're doing as we're generating the budget. Each of these, each of those are budgeted funds, general, water, sewer, streets, bond and interest. We have to establish a limit of expenditures throughout the budgeting process. That that becomes our cap for the year within those specific funds. If throughout the year we do end up incurring more expenses than we did budget, we can do an amendment process, but we have to go through the process that we're doing right now. We've got to have a public hearing, we're gonna publish it, we have a council vote, we've got to send to the counties, send to the state for all that to get certified. So each year when we adopt a budget, you see this certificate form here. This is the sheet that every council member signs when we adopt the budget. This is what establishes that budget authority for those funds. So that's our our guide, our cap for each of those throughout the year. So we have the following funds, got general, our PBC trustee fund, which is our public building commission. All that that fund is used for is just to pay the debt service for city hall, pool, land debt. And the numbers here, these are the fun numbers in our new software. So as you review reports, they'll be given you throughout the next couple of months. These numbers will should become pretty familiar after that. So we have streets fund, we have drug forfeiture funds, equipment reserve, capital projects, capital reserve, land bank fund, bond interest, and then our business type funds down there at the bottom, water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste. Any questions on those? So kind of to touch on the budget process here, we started about a month and a half ago, especially with the new software we got going. Trying to get everyone logged in and utilizing it, putting in all their expenses and everything they want for their budget requests. So we started that couple of months ago. Well, we just met I just met with Ted yesterday for several hours going through coming through each department, going over expenses and line item details, things like that. June 15th is the big day every year when we get our valuation estimates from Sedgwick County. That's when we get our overall assessed valuation number. That's when we can determine the value of each mill, how much we want to levy, everything so forth. I was hoping to get that out a little earlier this year, but our council meetings felt a little awkward. So it might be Friday before we get something on that. After we get that estimate, then we revise that first draft. And what I mean by that first draft is I tell all the department heads, like, give me your wish list. Throw everything in here that you want, that you need, everything like that. Once we get that first estimate and plug in those numbers, that's when we kind of start whittling back all the wants and really focus on and prioritize the needs of each department. After we do that first round of cuts, that's when we present to council, get your guys' feedback on that first draft and second draft and so forth until it's adopted. So with our new software, there's so much with it. It's hard to explain everything that it can do, but it's really nice to have. One big proponent or aspect of it is our increased transparency. You've probably seen that with the AP ordinance. It lists everything that we purchase on there every month or every two weeks. The chart of accounts was a big one with this. We developed it, refined it, made it more comprehensive and a little more easier to break out certain things, certain departments, everything like that. Reporting power makes life so much easier compared to our former software. You can manage your layouts. They can be scheduled to run on their own, so they just show up in your email every day. It's it's wonderful.
That's that's something I was talking to Jim the other day. They this new software, Barry did something in two clicks that used to take me. I probably wasted hundreds of hours the last eight years in City of Bel Air, just recreating what I what the old system could do on Excel spreadsheets so I can analyze it harder. But Barry did it with two clicks the other day and it frustrated me. But that's the kind of power. That's the kind of power when if anybody's ever implemented a new technology or a new system into their workplace and they're saying, oh, my gosh, how much time do I just we just saved by this one thing? So we're starting now that we've implemented not only this module, but all the modules. We're starting to find these little nuggets of time, these little nuggets of time as we go through. It's gonna take a little while, but every time we find a nugget, we'll be sure and report it because it's a big victory for staff and for the city overall, because the more productive we can get ourselves, the less people we need in the future. And that's the whole design of this new product.
I do have some visual examples of that exact thing Ted has talked about here just a minute. But with the new chart of accounts, we added divisions within our old line item structure. So now we have our fund, our department, our division, and then the object is the line item itself, whether it be wages, postage, publications, professional dues, memberships, everything like that. So the line item here, that 100, 100, 140, 626, that's showing the postage for finance. It's finance department is within the general fund. We're under the administration department and then the finance division. So that's kind of how that breakdown on the right there is. We have several departments, admin, police, rec, land parks, planning and zoning. And within some of those departments, we have divisions to break it out even more, to really focus on what are the needs for those particular sections of our structure.
And Barry's gonna keep explaining, but for example, for the last several years, we've been reporting from the department level. So you'd see administration department, but you wouldn't know how much we spend on the finance side of the administration or the city manager side or the legal side. But now that we are breaking these out into divisions, you'll have a clear understanding of where we are going and what we are spending our spending our valuable resources on.
Just to touch on the reporting functionality of this again, we also built in subobjects. So there's an additional number in each line item. It's just not visible on the reporting. So for example, here, that additional six in front of the object there, we can run reports just on those subobjects. So if we just want to see commodities across every department, every division we have, we just report on that subobject. If we want to see all personnel costs, I just hit the number five, hit run. It'll show print on report of all personnel costs across the board. Same with the contractuals at seven, capital delays at eight, nine is transfers. We can run on any of those independently without having to run every single line item we have and then type into Excel what which ones are we wanting to actually see to present for comparisons. So as Ted mentioned, this was our previous brain of the budget was the all important budget spreadsheet. This goes back to 2016 of budget, actuals, variances, year to date numbers, all in those hidden columns there. And this is what would take so long. So we'd have to run a report in our old software, type all these in individually, type in all the percentages, do all the calculations, everything like that. Now, as you see on here, there's a notes section on the side. These are all manual themselves. We have to make sure we're doing the right things, out of the right lines every year, the right percentages, change every little nuance about the book. Now with the software, we have each of our line items. We have individual details that we can go in and attach to that line item. We can report on these as well. When you see the budget reports, it'll break out every expenditure we have categorized for that particular line item itself. So with that, this is an example of our old report from our old software. You can see there the 0101, that's general fund admin. Admin covers city manager, city clerk, legal, finance, engineering, all those departments, just all lumped into one. But now when we run the reports, you can see this is for the city manager department, general fund, administration department, city manager division. And for this particular expense line, professional dues and memberships, everything is detailed out individually for council to review as we get there. This is the budget comparison report. I know I get a lot of questions from council about, well, what about previous years compared to the year prior to this year to next year? Well, as Ted said, now I just hit a button and it creates it all for me. So this show this show on the 23 total activity, 24 activity, 25 year to date, 25 budget compared to what's going to be presented as the 26 budget, along with the increase, decrease and percentage changes there, which is amazing. I mean, Ted will appreciate how cool that is, but just glad to get rid of that massive spreadsheet for hours and hours of time updating them. So and here's another breakout of our department, two divisions from our previous software. So previously we had rec as its full department and then it cut us to everything from day camp, rec itself, senior services, all that. So now our recreation department, 130 now has, we can lump in the pool with it, so 330. Day camp, rec and senior services within the rec fund, all broken out individually.
And I think the hardest part for this budget cycle and Barry and I are nerding out a little bit on this and we know that is what we did is we we dumped all this data into our new the old data into the new system. So our base year was last year with the old system. Or so so it's gonna some of these reports might look a little funky when we publish them to you guys and we'll be able to explain why they look a little funky. But as we continue, next year is gonna be light years ahead of where we're at this year. So it's just gonna build and build and build as we move forward through this new system. I just wanted to preface that because Bear and I spent a lot of time yesterday and it you have a lot of questions when you look at it because you say, wait, why did this go up 200%? You know, it's because we took it from a different, you know, because we're reshuffling things. So when we do publish and give you the proposed budget, there might be some oddities that you see. Please ask the question, but don't feel alarmed like we're increasing a certain line item by, you know, 800% because it usually those numbers are tied to something that we changed from previous year.
So a good example of that is right here, this the recreation division itself. You can see for 25, we had 354,000 budgeted for personnel. We've only spent 138 so far this year, which is obviously less than half of that. So what's been broken out is a senior, our senior services salary, the day camp salaries, the pool, everything like that. So it's going to look a little wonky at first, but it'll get there. When we do those comparisons though, if you look at the department total right here, it will match what was presented last year at budget time. So that overall department number will match last year's to get some kind of footing there. So talking with Ted a little bit and we're talking about budget goals and we're thinking of what to present and we came up with like anytime there's a change in leadership, it's always a good time to have a fresh set of eyes, look at everything. Want to really solidify and review the foundation we have because everything's going to be built upon that. So that's one thing we're really focusing on. Identify any pitfalls, processes, procedures, just like we were talking about earlier with planning and zoning, refine them, revise them, get them developed and implemented. We need to maintain what we have and that comes to every aspect of the city, whether it's personnel, assets, equipment or software. If we don't know what we have, we can't maintain it, therefore we can't stand upon that foundation and move forward. Planning for the future, we've got some big things there with the comp plan and that'll set a great baseline for projecting out our CIP plan over the next few years. And then something to think about would maybe some intermittent strategic plans over that comp plan period. Every three years or so, we have a little strategic plan with some action items and goals that we can accomplish over those three years, that three-year period. Just renew that over the entire length of time with the comp plan. So it really establishes some extra priorities for us to focus on as well, to bring back the council, keep us in line with our budgeting and our needs. And also to continue to responsibly lower the mill levy, smart growth, but the software brings so many opportunities to look at job duties and tasks. What can we refine? What can we combine now? One of our biggest accomplishments, so accomplishments so far was our utility shut-off day. And we were averaging about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty utility shut-offs a month. And what that means is this month, our utility clerks would go through every utility bill. They'd see who was passed due, get it all over to public works, public works to go out and manually turn those off, bring all the reporting and documentation back to us. We'd update it, take all the payments, download them online, update the everyone's accounts and send public works back out to turn everything on. And it would usually take all the public work staff about a hundred percent of the day, if not a day and a half sometimes, depending on the number. But since we got the software and we implemented our new notification system where it sends out reminder emails for payments, the day before a shut-off, we send out phone calls and text messages to anyone on the list. We've got that down to under forty-five for two months in a row. And now, once we do that, we hit a button that automatically goes to our public works tablets. So they're already in the field, populates a Google map and they go around, do the shut-offs, it's done within a couple of hours. So it's saving time everywhere. So every time we find one of these process enhancements, we have to kind of look at what we do on a day-to-day basis and refine those job duties. So that's kind of what I mean by that. So just a quick overview on our population, we're constantly growing over the past several years. Some estimates for twenty-five, it's hard to find a decent estimate until July when the annual
It comes out July first.
Survey comes out, but some have us about ten thousand, some have us about eleven thousand five hundred. Throw a dart right in the middle and there you go. We'll go with that. It's still consistently growing over time. Same with our assessed value, along with population growth, there's going to be more housing, more commercial activity, more just the overall development within the city. So I can see a constant upward trend with our assessed valuation over time there. Last year, our assessed value was a hundred and twelve million, been averaging about ten percent per year. So estimating without our actual estimates from the county will probably be around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five, depending on the assessed valuation. So along with those increases, population and assessed valuation, Bel Air's done a great job of responsibly lowering that mill levy over time. No huge drops. It's a consistent, steady decline over time, which really helps keep those fluctuations in check when it comes to revenues and expenses. So doing a great job there. Just throwing the CPI inflation calculator here, just from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, we've got about a twenty-three percent increase in overall CPI, which kind of leads into our next chart here. It had a crest from Mayor Binash, look at this, about the comparing the population increases to the CPI index and how we've kind of leveled out compared to assessed value and taxes levied compared to what it would be if we were to follow that CPI and population growth estimate. Does that summarize that?
Yep, I think that's right.
So, and I like the way it looks out. It turned out. So it, that bottom line there, that budget versus target over-under number here, based on the calculation on the population CPI, for twenty twenty-one, we levied about forty thousand over what we, what the target would have been for that year. For twenty-two, we levied forty-two thousand less than what the target would have been that year. So it kind of evens out over time as you go across the board. We had one big jump, twenty-three to twenty-four, that was with that giant increase in assessed valuation that year from all the development.
And the last one, you can't really say because you haven't put a budget in for twenty twenty-six yet.
So that's why I outline my assumptions there at the bottom, just using the ten percent and stuff like that.
So a reason for this formula, just so you know the background of this, this is not a perfect example, but an example of some of the things that the state is talking about on property taxes. So trying to move away from assessed value focused, which is really kind of a shell game when you start paying, playing games with the assessed values instead of looking at the budget growth focus, because that's where the real property taxes come from. Budget is what we need. Okay. We say, okay, we need five million for this next year budget. I don't know. We haven't done the budget yet, but we need five million. That's what's going to be the tax. The assessed value is just a way of spreading the tax. It's, it's not, the tax is going to be the assessed, is going to be the budget. And they can play games with the assessed value. They can move it up. They can put the caps on it of four percent growth or any of the cat stuff. This isn't going to change the five million dollars that you need to make the budget. Okay. So just trying to be more budget focused growth. And if we can convince the legislature, and there are people who, who understand, kind of understand this in the legislature, that this is the, the direction you need to focus on, I think we'll get a lot of gains there. Both as, as individuals, both the schools and cities and counties, because we're the ones who are, who are levying property taxes now. The state isn't. And, and so we get some, some improvement there. But this is an idea that came from Kansas Policy Institute. I took their idea and actually put it into numbers for us with Barry's help. He, he did a lot of the, the work here. I just told him the, the concept and and this is where it came from. So these are, to me, these are good ways, there's, there's good justification for that kind of growth because you say, okay, what's the inflation and what's the population growth? And there you, then you have a justified number and that be a target rather than waiting for the assessed value, assessed valuations to come out and say, oh, that's our target. Well, that's what's causing us so much problems is when everybody says that's our target because those assessed values will take us the wrong direction.
Don't want to, and the, the fun part too, you know, you look at twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three and you're like, what happened there? You know, we did have experienced a huge growth in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. What happened? And I looked it up because I was like, what, what was that? Staff was drowning and you get, and, and the council saw that and we hired a police officer, a utility clerk and a public parks, public works personnel in one year because we were drowning. And that's where I think the justification and what taxpayers will see if, if they see something like that is you can go back to the taxpayers and say, well, here's what we, here's the situation we were against or vice versa. Hey, we, we were going along doing well. That's why we went under the target, vice versa, but at least provides a baseline of some sort that we have. So I, I thought it was useful to show as well.
So it'll be good just to refine these numbers when the CPI is finalized for June and the Census Bureau updates our estimates, which comes out July first. And then we can, we can just work with those because if the state acts on this, that's probably what they're going to end up doing, using CPI. They're going to tell the county clerk, use CPI and, and, and Census Bureau estimates for, for population. So they have a, a solid baseline that's not manipulated by any, any individual taxing authority.
Yeah, when those come out, get that updated and it'll be in our, for sure, the July workshop.
Yeah.
So Mayor, quick question on that. Has there been discussion that that will be the new definition of revenue neutral? Or is revenue neutral being mixed completely?
That depends on where, who you talk to in the legislature. The, the proposal that they had last year, twenty, twenty-three ninety-six, I think was the number, actually replaced revenue neutral with this, but in, in reality, this is what you should drive towards and forget about revenue neutral. Revenue neutral just says, well, if you grow up from last year's budget, then you're not revenue neutral. Well, who's in that boat? I mean, anybody, it, over a period of time is going to not be revenue neutral. So, I mean, you might get a year or two that they are, but, but over time, it's not going to be. If you listen to, that's one thing I have a disagreement with the Kansas Policy Institute. If you listen to those guys, they'll tell you there's, I don't remember, their numbers are astronomical, like there's twenty-three thousand taxing authorities in Kansas that did not exceed revenue neutral last year. I mean, but they're talking about all these townships, counties, water districts, everything. And some of these districts are like less than a hundred people, but this, it's a taxing authority. Okay. So, so when you, we look at those numbers, you say, okay, so what's the real world here like? Okay. And, and I would challenge anybody to say, okay, any, any population of any significant size, five hundred people or more, they could not go five years and not exceed revenue neutral. It's just not going to, that's not feasible, or they're not doing anything, you know, one or the other.
Appreciate the background.
That's just, so it really kind of depends on who you talk to, but what I would say probably if you put this in, maybe you change terminology to target neutral, okay, or something like that. I, you know, I don't know, just
Semantics.
I don't care. It's just semantics, whatever you want to call it, just call it. Right?
And I think that's a great point, Mayor. With the revenue neutral rate, it'd be one thing to be able to do that one year, but the next year, we're instantly going to have to exceed it because expenses always go up every single year. You can't survive on the same ten dollar bill for
So maybe go older for one or two years and then there's going to be a huge spike to catch up.
Exactly. So that's why I really appreciate the responsible decrease, decrease in the mill levy that Bel Air's done over the past several years. It keeps it maintained, keeps it stagnant. There's no spikes up and down either way. It's just a constant slowly decreasing climb there.
Barry, I really appreciate you putting this together. I looked at it pretty closely. The only thing I, and I sent you a couple of messages just to kind of ask some questions. Only thing I felt, and I know they're all assumptions, but we'll eventually be able to firm them up, is it would be nice to know what our assumptions are and what our projections are on, like example, ten percent assessed value increase. What percentage of that is just our existing property value and what percentage of that is new taxes coming on the rolls? I just think every year it'd be good to know, is that a five, is that a fifty-fifty? Is that a twenty-five seventy-five? Just so we can kind of understand when we're talking about mill rate cut, how that fits in with our growth and those two pieces of it. So.
That, that's an automatic, that's the way that's reported to us already. So it was just a matter of reporting to the council what you get.
And summarizing it in that way, that's nice and neat.
Yeah.
That would be that. For the purposes of this slide here, I just wanted to illustrate what it would take at these assumptions to break even on that one year for next year. So this is just numbers out of hat for this one. It's not anything actual from the county.
This would actually reduce, you, you're saying, your assumption is that this would reduce the mill levy by one point two?
Well, in order to, whoops. So in order to basically break even with the target, we'd have to reduce our mill levy one point two seven with a ten percent increase.
I sent out an updated presentation. We, we found the CIP error, CIP error, CPI error later.
I had it down here. I just transposed it up here. So it's a little thing off a little bit. So apologies there.
Yeah. So we'll get a new inflation number for the last twelve months or every month. I mean, actually May came out, it was three point, two point one, but, but June's not that yet because June's not over with. So, yeah.
I don't want to prolong it too much, but this is kind of the, this is why I think government's going is get really good at data, get really good at reporting out what we're spending, how we're spending it, where our revenues are, and hire someone smart like Barry to show us exactly what is going on. And that's what I'm most excited and Barry and I together share this kind of vision of getting the great data into these spreadsheets and into these systems, and then that can produce really good results for decision makers and make it an informed decision. So I'm really excited about this presentation just because I feel like the last year and a half of our efforts are starting to come through, but it's only going to take more time and more study.
For the twenty-six development purposes, we're going to develop the budget at forty-two mills equivalent. Right now we're at forty-two point four eight four. So once we present that, then we'll get the feedback and provisions from council if any, but I mean, I love it with the half mill decrease every year, just.
Yeah. Don't misunderstand. I, I am going to look at that target and compare the budget to the target, but I'm not saying we have to meet the target each time. That's not what I'm saying. I just want to know that we are managing it appropriately with, with our, with our growth.
We should never say that's always, that's how we've always done it. There's always opportunities to look at it from a different angle, different ways. It also might shed some light on some things and great idea.
And priorities change year in, you know, every year. So it's good to have the target and good to have the discussion. So appreciate you putting it together.
So with the, with the target and then you have your justifications to exceed that or to not exceed that based upon your priorities and needs of your community. So changes all the time.
So Y, Y forty-two versus the forty-one two was just the next estimate you're saying?
For the twenty-six budget?
Right.
We're, we're building it out in the system at the forty-two mill equivalent. So that'd be a point four eight four drop from what it is right now.
Right.
Right.
But this target would, this target, if, if it were right, would give you forty-one two as the target.
Yeah. So I want to be crystal clear. All the assumptions on there, I just pulled out of a hat. It's only for presentation circumstances right now to give you an idea of what, if we use that model.
That's why we want to clarify that.
In reality.
That wasn't a real target.
Yeah. In reality, the forty-two is, is a guess because he doesn't have the assessed, the total assessments yet. So he, he has no idea. I mean, he has some idea, but it's, it's a guess. Educated guess.
As long as it didn't drop, then I think we can handle forty-two, which I don't think it dropped.
Oh, this is great.
Not of my, not of my, the, the estimates they gave me on my assessed values or, or any representative of the rest of the city, I think it's all going up.
Ten and a half.
All right.
How's the traffic been on that property tax calculator you put up on the website?
So I'm a, I'm the secretary for the, for KSG FOA right now. I presented that last fall at our conference. I've had McPherson, I've had Johnson County, I've had El Dorado, I've had several cities reach out asking, hey, can you build this or can you share the file or how can you help us get this, everything like that? So it's a great tool and Sedgwick County loves it. Real attorneys really love it.
Yeah.
I talk to them all the time about specials and their property taxes. I was like, just go here, you can type in the house value, what it's going to sell for, figure out your property taxes, saves me a five-minute phone call.
Yeah. And you'll just update it whenever we get to that point. Yeah. Thank you for building that.
That's probably a whole lot better than the one that the county put out with their budget input. Did you see that website? The budget simulator input? Yeah. I was just like, wow, that, to me, that was just like, I, that's almost useless to me. I couldn't give any input to it, but.
Budget that size, it's
Right.
Hard to
It's tough.
The educational component of what someone would need to understand to respond to that accurately. And it makes it pretty easy, but there's just so much, so many moving parts for the budget like that.
Well, and the other thing is they have so many mandates they have to follow, but we, unfortunately, we don't have those mandates, but I hope we never do.
No, I'm a big proponent of community engagement during the budget process. It's always a hot topic. It's always a big deal at conferences, everything like that, but I'm a big proponent of that engagement should happen throughout the year, you know, when we're doing our comp plan, when we're doing any strategic plans, any CIP planning, any development, any discussions about the rec or the turf management, everything like that. That all happens throughout the year. So where when budget season comes around, we already know our priorities, ready to go, hit the ground running once we get our numbers. So where when budget season comes around, we already know our priorities, ready to go, hit the ground running once we get our numbers. It's hard to educate as much as you need to in a month and a half period, to really gain that understanding for everyone involved in that process. So that's why it needs to be done throughout the year, that's my opinion, but this is kind of how I look at it.
So our July workshop is the 8th. There'll be some data not available by then.
Was that budget calendar not on there?
Yeah, I just looked at it, it's, it's July 8th. So there'll be some data missing, you won't have updated CPI by then, because it won't come out till the 11th. But you'll have updated census data.
Yeah, since data and then we'll have all of our valuation estimates from the county. Like that, so over the next two weeks, once we do get that on Friday, Ted and I are going to schedule another meeting with each department to start revising those budgets down and then hopefully get those reports out to you at least a week, week and a half before our next workshop.
You're not going to present that $10 million tech price tag that was proposed to you? I'm being facetious about all the budget requests from the different departments, I'm just, I'm sure they didn't do that.
No, there've been some, it's just a hard no. Yeah, I break out the red pen when we get to those meetings.
Yeah.
No Lamborghini squad car.
It's fun being in my position because Barry will say, no, they'll come to me and I'll say, Barry said that? Aw, man, I'm on your side. I used to be the Barry.
Okay, any other questions on budget? While we're going. All right, is there any other thing we can talk about tonight? If there isn't, I think we'll call it an evening and see everybody next Tuesday for final meeting of the month. Or the final scheduled meeting, let's put it that way, we'll never know it.